Welcome to the September 22nd City Council Meeting. I'm Gina Louise Shara, I'm the City Council President and I will be presiding this evening. This meeting and all participating on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. We will begin with public comments and after public comment, we will convene the meeting. Um, I've actually, but I have a whole preamble for public comments. Um, but I am actually going to ask if there are any hands for public comment before I read the preamble, because it will save us some time if no one is here for public comment. Um, and while I'm waiting to see if some hands pop up, um, I'm going to note, it seems like Zoom's done its thing and changed something else again. So the live transcript has been enabled. But if you want to use that and use the closed captioning live transcript, then, um, if it's not automatically showing for you right now, you may have to turn it on for yourself. So look in that bottom menu bar, um, and for me, it says live transcript. I don't know if anyone has, uh, other information about what it says from a different point of view, but, um, feel free to put in the chat if you're having trouble and I will, um, I will try and help you out with that. Okay, hold on, I'm getting one message. Um, but I don't see any hands. So if there is no public comment this evening, and if you want, I'll just tell you how to raise your hand. You can either use the raise, you use a raise hand feature and that's either in the, uh, at the bottom of the reactions, in the reactions, um, or, um, at the bottom of the participants panel. Okay. Oh, here's a hand. Um, let me. Pam Powers, can you unmute? Pam, do you, are you here for public comment? We can't hear you. Pam, you're not muted, but I can't hear you. Oh. Uh, oh, I need to be unmuted on my phone call. Okay, hold on one second. Uh, let's try this. Is that? Can you unmute on the phone?
I'm unmuted now.
Great.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Are you? Want to make a public comment?
I, I am, I am. I'm making a public service announcement to let everybody know that early voting is currently taking place at the North Hampton Senior Center. We'd like to see some folks come down and early vote if that is their desire in person. Uh, the early voting is, uh, going to be tomorrow, Thursday and Friday, uh, September 23rd and 24th from 8:30 a.m. until 4:30 p.m. It's in the great room and we're asking folks to enter through the side entrance, uh, located next to the North Hampton, um, the, the senior housing. And, uh, you'll also be exiting that way as well. In addition, uh, going on during the voting is a bake sale that's being hosted by the North Hampton Senior Center. There's lots of goodies and coffee available and the funds are being used to raise money for new furniture in the lobby, so I'm told. And as also, also as a reminder that we will be having voting for the preliminary election on Tuesday, September 28th. Polls will be open from 7 a.m. until 8 p.m., uh, on Tuesday. So that's it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Hey, all right. I see no other hands for public comment. So Laura, will you please take the role?
Counselor Dwight.
I'm here.
Counselor Foster.
Here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor LaBarge.
You're muted. Counselor LaBarge.
Here.
Counselor Maori.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor Quinlan.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
And Counselor Thor.
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, we'll jump into our agenda. And our first item is, um, updates from any council committee chairs? Any updates? If not, we can move on into one-minute announcements. Okay, Counselor Jarrett and Counselor LaBarge.
Florence Night Out returns this Saturday, September 25th, from 4 to 10 p.m. in downtown Florence. Uh, we're, we're going to have live music from local bands on open air artisan market, uh, art installations, film screenings, family-friendly events. And this will be a masked event, uh, in accordance with the mask mandate for outdoor events. Um, and they're also asking that guests register, uh, it's free, um, but to ensure that they can keep an accurate head count and implement contract tracing. Uh, so I'll be there helping out Mask Bike with the valet bike parking. And, um, the website is florencenightout.org. Please join us.
And I like valet bike parking. Counselor LaBarge and Counselor Maori.
Thank you. Um, I just want to talk about a resident in Ward 6. And that resident is Al St. Ange. Al St. Ange is a partner for all of Rocky Hill Trail at Bert's Bog, Sandy Hill to overlook to Purtspit Road. Al does much of the work himself. And he is our eyes and ears when he sees something that Wayne's office has to address. I want to commend Al for working tirelessly, volunteering and keeping the trails clean and safe. Thank you, Al, for everything you are doing for Ward 6 and our trails of keeping them clean and safe. And I have to say, as of Saturday, meeting several people, they have thanked me, the mayor, Wayne Biden, and even conservation on making this happen. So thank you, Al.
Thank you for that lovely recognition, Counselor LaBarge. Counselor Maori.
I'm going to try to speak in two events, uh, because the League of Women Voters is having their annual book sale. Uh, I believe nine before before, Clark Ford's Night Out. Do you mistake your books and head it over to Florida's Night Out? It's at Smith's Folk. There's COVID precautions in place. You need a mask. And I also want to mention that on Sunday at 3:30, Lead Civic and Ward 3 Association is hosting a counselor-at-large forum to meet the candidates for counselors at large. That is, so it's 3:30 outside the Leeds Elementary School. There'll be, um, attend, I believe, and then chairs, um, and that masks as well. So, uh, please feel free to join us. It's the, I believe, the last forum before the, the preliminary election, uh, day on Tuesday. So hope to see you there.
Thank you. Other announcements? Um, I have one that hasn't been mentioned yet, which is Sunday, September 26th, is Miss Flo Diner's 80th birthday. And they are having a gala with live music. This is from 3 to 7 p.m. under the pavilion at the diner. And, uh, tickets are available at the diner. Happy birthday, Miss Flo. Um, any other, any other recognitions or announcements from counselors? Seeing none, we will move to communications from the mayor. And, um, I know that Mayor Narckowitz is going to update us on the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Welcome, Mayor.
Good evening, uh, good evening, counselors. Um, thank you, Council President. Um, yes, I, I wanted to do a quick, um, update and overview of ARPA, which I know you've been hearing a lot about. Um, and so, um, I know you probably thought and hoped that, um, you would escape 2021 without a power, another PowerPoint from me. But, um, alas, I thought the only best way to organize this information was a PowerPoint. So, um, I just want to share my screen briefly and just give you a quick PowerPoint here, uh, with some important information about ARPA. So I'm going to quickly share my screen and, um, one second. Okay, and here we go. So, um, so this is a, um, a quick presentation on ARPA or the American Rescue Plan Act. Um, and sort of title, the working title is developing a transparent, strategic and equitable plan for North Hampton's federal COVID-19 funding. So these are the quick things I want to cover in this quick presentation. What is ARPA? Um, how much funding will North Hampton receive? Uh, what are North Hampton's options for spending the money? And how can North Hampton develop a transparent, strategic and equitable ARPA funding plan? So first off, uh, ARPA, uh, which you've probably read a lot about, um, the American Rescue Plan Act, um, was a far-reaching COVID recovery measure proposed by the Biden-Harris Administration. President Biden signed it into law back in March 11th of 2021. It's a $1.9 trillion dollar measure, uh, providing, uh, direct financial relief to Americans, assistance to businesses and aids to states, counties and municipalities. Um, the city of North Hampton will receive approximately 22 million in these relief funds over the course of the next two years. All the funding must be committed by December 31st, 2024, and fully expended by December 31st, 2026. Um, the funds will be distributed in two installments. We reserved our first payment in June and then the second payment will be distributed, uh, 12 months from the first award date next year. So just to give you a quick breakdown of the totals of that, uh, uh, $21,747,984. Um, eight million coming directly from the federal government in June of 2021. Another eight million coming directly from the federal government in June of 2022. Um, that's because of our status as a CBG entitlement community, um, that we will receive this direct payment from the federal government. And then there's an additional allotment of funding of a total of $5.7 million from our county allocation that will be divided up into two payments in both 2021 and 2022. There is this additional payment to North Hampton, um, because unlike many other parts of the country where, uh, which have active, uh, county governments that will be receiving a direct allocation. Um, not every county in, uh, Massachusetts has a county government. And obviously, as we know, Hampshire County is one of them. Um, so as an alternative, um, in cases where there is not a county, uh, they divide the money that was allocated to the county, um, on a, on a per capita basis to each community. So that represents, uh, North Hampton's share. So how can, uh, North Hampton spend the money? So under ARPA, they laid out basically broad four acceptable categories of use for how ARPA funds could be spent. Um, category one, obviously, this is a recover, uh, rescue plan. So responding to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. Uh, this includes assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofit, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel and hospitality. The second category is pay workers, providing essential work, uh, during the COVID-19 public health emergency. Um, the third category is providing government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue to the city due to COVID-19 public health emergency in the most recent full fiscal year. Uh, and then category four is, uh, making necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband. Um, and I'll go through these with some, some examples, just to give you a better sense of it. And I'll go through these with some examples, just to give you a better sense of it. So, so under category 1, a public health emergency and negative economic impacts, I won't read each one of these lines in the PowerPoint, but give you sort of an overview. There's, sorry, I skipped over one. There's the responding to the health crisis. So obviously, all the things you can imagine responding directly to the health crisis. A lot of the things that we've been doing all along, using other federal funding sources like CARES Act and FEMA, which interestingly have been extended a little because obviously COVID has extended itself through the Delta variant. But the idea was that this would be provide ongoing funding for direct response for things like testing and vaccination and contact tracing. There's also a category of assistance to households, whether it's directly to workers, job training, food assistance, housing, utilities, counseling, and legal aid. Then small business and nonprofit assistance. So again, specific industries that may have been impacted, utility rent or mortgage assistance for businesses, other types of hardship mitigation and technical assistance, et cetera. And then aid to disproportionately impacted populations. And again, this is very, this is defined by the federal government as, you know, populations where individuals are earning less than 60% of the median income, where 25% or more of the population falls under the poverty line. So these are sort of the, some of the examples of what could be funded under this category 1 of ARPA. Under, a little bit of, oh, sorry, I, okay, okay. So category 3, this is the provision of government service examples. Essentially, what this means is essentially making up for revenues that were local, city revenues that were impacted by COVID. So, you know, we think about during COVID, things like parking and hotel motel and meals and many of the key local revenues that we depend on to pay for services were heavily impacted by COVID. So they have a whole calculation built into the regulations from the Treasury Department about how communities determine what their lost revenue is. It's a comparison to fiscal year 2019. There's a, there's a growth index that they provide. And then you have to go through and do a whole comparison following the formula that the Treasury Department and Mass DOR has approved. So, and so we have preliminarily estimated that that would be about $6.2 million in terms of all those different types of categories of revenue that were impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. The interesting thing about this particular type of revenue replacement is that it sort of comes back to the city and then the city can utilize it for, you know, for city services. So it's sort of outside of the other category. So, you know, if we make up parking revenue that typically normally would have come into the system in a normal year based on, based on prior year averages, you know, we can replenish that lost revenue to pay for capital in parking and keep our parking system running and solvent. So, so that is category 3. And then category 4 is water and sewer and broadband infrastructure. Again, they tried to put some parameters around the types of water and sewer projects. It's pretty broad, but they mentioned the fact that, you know, the types of eligible water and sewer projects would be aligned with the same types of guidelines that are used under the EPA Clean Water State Revolving Fund or the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Eligibility Guidelines, just as sort of a way for folks to understand the types of projects, you know, by way of example, the wastewater treatment plant project that we're in the middle of right now. That's, that actually is one that we're using state revolving fund loan money to finance. So that is an example of a project that would qualify, for example. Stormwater, while it says water and sewer, the criteria does allow for stormwater projects as well under that water and sewer criteria. And then broadband, you know, the, one of the restrictions on the broadband is it must provide a minimum upload and download speeds of 100 megabytes per second. Obviously, North Hampton is in the middle of a major broadband study, completed a market survey, and now the feasibility study is in progress. We hope to have that completed shortly. So this could be a potential source of funding for broadband infrastructure moving forward. So those are sort of the four categories and some of the examples. What would be the goals for distributing ARPA funds? Obviously, would want to seek extensive input and feedback from the community to help structure the city's use of ARPA funding. We'd want to design a transparent, accessible, and equitable project selection process for allocating those funds. We'd obviously want to, you know, as the law lays out, we want to prioritize projects, people, businesses, and organizations with a focus on those most impacted by COVID-19. Another key piece here is leveraging other state and federal resources to maximize our funding. You may notice that North Hampton is not alone in, among communities that haven't really spent ARPA funds yet at this point. And one of the main reasons for that is, and we've been to many presentations and National League of Cities webinars and lots of other networking around ARPA. And one of the pieces of this is there's all the other funds that have been distributed to state government and to federal government. You know, in Massachusetts, for example, the legislature and the governor are currently holding hearings about, I think, the $5 billion that they've received. There's also other federal programs that will be funded directly from ARPA funds. Obviously, there's the big infrastructure bill, bipartisan infrastructure bill. And there's also the reconciliation package, which has a number of social service supports that will be, that could be coming out to cities and towns and states, again, as part of this. So we've been advised, and many communities are, waiting to see what those state programs and what those other federal programs may look like so that we really maximize our funding and spend it on things that wouldn't be covered by these other state and federal grant programs. Or alternatively, to make sure that we're leveraging them with these other types of funds when we deploy our ARPA funds in the community. And then the final goal, obviously, this is a massive grant program. And there's lots of reporting requirements. So we want to make sure that we were able to cover our administrative costs for administering the program over the next four, four years. Two years, obviously, for the allocation, but then the outlying years that you actually have to spend the funding. So those would be goals, I think, for how best to distribute these funds. Best practices, the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, has issued a set of best practices that are sort of aligned with the US Treasury's guidance on ARPA. Obviously, ARPA funds are going to be non-recurring. You know, they're given over a finite period of time, and they will not continue, and they must be spent by a date certain. So obviously, they really should be focused on non-recurring expenditures. Hopefully, COVID will be a non-recurring event, and we can begin to work on the recovery process and look at projects related to that. But again, like, like any grant funds that will run out, we want to be careful about how we apply them to the budget. Replenishing revenue declines during the pandemic should be given a high priority to rebuild financial flexibility and restore fiscal resiliency. Again, that gets back to the, to the, to the category of allowing cities to replenish revenues that were lost during the, during the pandemic. Again, this gets back, the next one gets back to what I was just speaking to. Use other dedicated grants and programs first, whenever possible, and save ARPA funds for priorities that are not eligible for other federal and state assistance programs. Avoid creation of new programs or add-ons to existing programs that require an ongoing financial commitment without appropriate budget planning and long-term funding analysis. Again, kind of a variation on the first item, but, you know, being mindful that this is a large infusion of money, but it's a one-time infusion. And so whatever you decide to build with it, it has to be sustainable once that money runs out. And then use of ARPA funds to cover operating deficits should be, again, considered temporary and, and, and that, you know, need to have an eye on, on future budget planning if they are used to backfill the budget. We have not used any of them to backfill the budget. And, and so that's best practices from GFOA. Next would be a proposed ARPA timeline. Again, this is a proposed ARPA timeline. You know, in addition to the fact that we are sort of in this waiting period to see how the state and federal governments will roll out their ARPA funding, I have been very mindful of the fact that I am approaching the end of my term as mayor, that we're about to have a city election, we're about to have a change of administration. So I've felt very much that the decisions that are going to be made about this funding over the next two to four years really should be made by the next administration. So what my goal has been over these last few months has been to really, you know, put in place internally infrastructure for making sure we're understanding the grants, learning about them, and making sure we're, you know, filling out all the paperwork and reporting requirements and all of those things. And then beginning to collect some information, but really be in a position so that when the new administration comes into office, they will be in the best position possible to then begin working with the community to deploy this important funding. So obviously, tonight, I'm presenting this sort of framework to the city council. As part of that information gathering that I mentioned, we are planning to launch next week a online community ARPA survey, a survey that would help to sort of collect some baseline information from city residents about, you know, how COVID impacted them and some of their initial ideas about the types of programs and priorities that, that might be most impactful in the city. As you all know, North Hampton is a, very responsive to these online surveys, and we always get a really strong response. And as we look out around the state and around the country, this has been sort of one of the ways that cities have begun to collect information from residents about the types of programs and priorities that the ARPA funding could be used for. So we'll launch that survey to kind of begin to collect information. Then obviously, on November 2nd, the voters will elect the 45th mayor of North Hampton, and then we'll be immediately moving into transition mode. So I would envision that between November 3rd and January 2nd, that, that I would work with the mayor-elect and their transition team to, you know, to begin forming an ARPA advisory committee. Oh, I've got a dog barking in the background. Sorry about that. And just one second here. Sorry about that. I'll shut the door. So the, so the idea would be that we would work with the mayor-elect and their transition team to form an ARPA advisory committee to begin providing guidance on this, as well as to plan and execute a series of community stakeholder meetings. Again, another way to begin collecting information from the community about this, not only collecting information, but really educating the community more about what ARPA is and the ways that it could be used to support our residents and businesses and organizations through the COVID recovery. Obviously, then January 3rd, the 45th mayor of North Hampton will be sworn into office. And then really, these are just tentative, you know, February, spring timeframes. There could begin a process of soliciting projects, both internally and externally. And then projects could be funded and initiated. So that is my quick overview of ARPA. And I am going to unshare my screen. And I will answer any questions. If I could just have one quick moment to just address whatever is happening outside my office right now. And I'll be right back to answer your questions. Just one second.
I noticed that the transcription didn't work for the dog, though.
Okay. Again, my apologies for that. I'm home alone tonight. So, so I'm, that is the overview, and I'm available to answer any questions that anyone may have about it. Obviously, the presentation will be put online for people who would like to view it again. And if there's any questions. I believe that the council president is having some technical difficulties. I don't know, Laura, if you can.
Counselor Nash.
Unmute, or it sounds like there's some technical difficulties.
Right. Counselor Nash, are you available to assume the chair position?
I, I am here. And so are there any questions for the mayor? Counselor Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate that. Sounded like Scott had a lot to say about, about your presentation as well. My, my question for you is I know Superintendent Provost had sent out some information that the schools were looking at $3.4 million in funding. And I was just curious if that total is included in the total you just gave us or if that was a separate amount of money.
No, that's a separate allocation directly to the school district, to NPS. So that is not part of this. So these are kind of two separate processes. And so, yeah, Dr. Provost has begun a similar information gathering and, you know, community meeting process to talk about the funding that NPS is receiving as part of this process.
Any other questions? Counselor Quinnlan.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for this presentation. I wanted to ask you a question because you were talking about up to $6.2 million to be recaptured in lost revenue. And just in terms of, this is, this is a little bit of a, of a deep thing. So it may, maybe this would be a discussion outside of council if, if we think it's too much. But I'm curious about with our stability fund tied in with the delay of the two-and-a-half override, and now this money becoming available, what you are projecting for the, for the future of, of the stability fund, basically? Are we going to be in a better position than we would be? And because we've, you know, gotten through this period of, of lost revenue. And so I wonder if you could just kind of describe what you think the future looks like there.
Thank you. Yeah, so, I mean, we certainly, you know, we certainly, by delaying the override, used more stability funds than we had originally projected because we, you know, basically used stability funds to help us delay it a year. And we also obviously trimmed our sales in some other areas as well. We also foregoed some contributions that we would normally make and, you know, in terms of different stabilization funds. So, you know, I haven't really, I haven't really run a calculation that way. I mean, we had to really go through revenues and really look at, at things, you know, like, you know, parking facilities, for example, you know, just like one of our, you know, one of our major sources of local revenue. Now, that was about $650,000 to $700,000 of that calculation. And so, you know, that's an example of a fund that we rely on to, to fund the system as well as to pay for capital projects in the system. So when you approve the capital project, program every year, often, well, all the projects within the parking, whether it's fixing the deck or investing in new equipment, are all sort of paid for by that, by that fund. So we weren't able to put, that fund did not grow or replenish itself during COVID because we were, you know, had either closed parking systems or empty parking lots. Uh, because we were, you know, had either closed parking systems or, or empty, uh, parking lots. Um, so, you know, some of this money will have to go to replenish that. But, um, it's certainly a strategy that could be looked at in terms of, um, you know, in terms of how you could use this, um, you know, to create, uh, more stability, uh, and more, uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, stable finances going into the future. Um, I think about, you know, I think about, for example, um, the issues that will lie ahead in terms of Coca-Cola's departure and the loss of water and sewer revenue. Um, I do think that, you know, these funds provide an opportunity to, to buffer that a little bit. Um, particularly if we've got, you know, this new source, this source of funding for water and sewer projects, um, that we might otherwise have to finance or pay for, uh, directly. Um, so it, it could provide, uh, stability in that arena as well. Um, but yeah, these are all, um, the kinds of decisions that will have to be made going forward as we sort of decide what are the priorities for the community, what are the things that we need to focus on. But certainly this, um, this funding, you know, would come back into, uh, the city, uh, and would most, you know, typically go into, you know, free cash and/or different stabilization funds. Um, so the fiscal stability stabilization fund, you know, could be one landing spot for some of these funds.
Great. Thank you. And then I did have one other question, which was just that, um, you, you had mentioned, um, the, the, you know, the kind of, um, grand administrative work around accounting for all of this and reporting, uh, and then also putting together an advisory board. I wondered, are you, would you, are you considering maybe hiring someone to, to, uh, assign to that? Uh, or do you think that's something that, that the mayor's office would take on with the current staff?
So we have, um, we currently have, um, a, a grant administrator, um, uh, that has been managing and, uh, our CARES Act funding and our FEMA funding as well. Um, so we've been, and, and like all federal grants, you're allowed to use some of that fund to pay for administration, uh, much like we do with CDBG as well. Um, and so, you know, I think our plan going forward, um, would be to, um, you know, transition and have that grants administrator continue to play that role with the, um, with the, uh, ARPA funds. Uh, um, uh, Abby Stone has been doing that work in our office. Uh, she's also been doing, um, you know, she's been doing a lot of the work, attending these seminars and figuring out the regulations and making sure that we're, you know, complying as well as gathering examples from all around the country about, you know, the ways that other, uh, cities are thinking about it. So I think we would want to continue having someone who is administering the funds. Um, obviously the finance director has also been involved in this process as well. Um, but I can tell you, um, uh, I can tell you that, um, uh, you know, Susan Wright can tell you from experience that when, you know, when she, uh, was finishing up her final year, you know, the CARES and FEMA, um, load, uh, was sort of not, not normal and not part of her normal job. And, and so, um, it is a large amount of funding, um, and a lot of regulatory, uh, requirements. So we do think this merits having somebody who would, um, you know, who would continue to provide grants administration going forward. So that is, I think, the plan at this point. Obviously that'll be up to the next administration if they want to continue that. But, um, we think that's the most prudent way, uh, to go because you really almost have to become, uh, is sort of an expert in ARPA. Um, you know, much like, you know, over in planning sustainability, we have folks that have become experts in CDBG and all of those filing requirements.
Right. Great. Thank you very much.
I see the council president is.
Oh, yeah. The council president needs to unmute, I guess, or, uh, uh, to be asked to unmute or unmuted.
I, I, thank you Laura. Can you make me?
I return, I return the helm to the council president.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. I missed your, your big moment. That, that was a Zoom first for me. Um, I could hear everything, but my screen totally disappeared. I couldn't do anything and I couldn't quit. And basically I had to force quit my computer. So, um, sorry about that. Hopefully that's not going to happen again. That's what I get for doing a Zoom update right before a council meeting. Counselor Mayory? Oh, can you not unmute?
See. All right. I just want to mention that that's exactly what happened to me. So I don't think it was your Zoom update. My screen kind of got transparent. I couldn't, um, even leave. This is very interesting. So I think it must be something else and we should keep that in mind. It keeps happening because it might be another, uh, source.
Okay. I will try and keep eyes on all of you. And if you disappear, um, make sure that you get in again and, and then get me to co-oh so you can unmute.
I also have a question, but you, you, you go ahead first and I'll.
No, that's, I, I have a question, but you, uh, please go ahead.
Okay. Well, I missed a chunk of this, so forgive me if it's redundant. So I, I heard that there's going to be a survey, um, a community survey. I was, uh, I know in places like St. Louis, they have these kind of community advisory boards and have public hearings and that, you know, a really deep level of engagement with the community. Did you mention anything, uh, like that, Mayor?
Yeah, that was in our, that was in our proposed timeline that, um, that there would be an advisory, uh, committee. I, I was proposing to wait until after the election and really, uh, work with the mayor-elect, uh, in terms of putting that together as well as holding, um, a series of community, uh, stakeholder meetings, um, again, much like many other communities are doing. Um, and much like the school department is doing now with its ARPA fund. So, um, yeah, that was definitely, uh, part of the timeline, uh, that we were envisioning. Um, but again, I wanted to, um, you know, begin collecting information with the online survey between now and the election. And then obviously for those next steps, really, uh, work with the mayor-elect, um, so that they would be, um, really part of that process since they would be carrying it forward after, uh, when they take the oath of office on January 3rd.
Thank you very much.
Um, I, and like Counselor Mary, I'm sorry if I missed you talking about this when I had blipped out. But since we do have some money that are, is, is a county allocation because we're considered a county seat. Uh, for that money, are there special sort of county-wide requirements? Or does that money need to be spent throughout the county or is it just, can it, is it just North Hampton money?
So we're basically getting North Hampton's share of the county money. So that 5.2 million represents only North Hampton's share. So every other, um, every other community in Hampshire County is also getting an allotment, um, you know, commensurate with their, the size of their community. So yeah, that money would just get blended in with our, um, direct ARPA funds to be used in the community. Um, so it's, again, it's a really broad scope. That's the thing. There, it's a really broad scope in terms of what you can do. I mean, you know, and again, I, I don't, in different communities are going to take different approaches to it. So it really is going to be tailored to what each community wants to do. Um, so yeah, it's, but the, but yes, those monies are strictly for, uh, North Hampton.
Thank you. All right, counselors. Any other questions or comments on these ARPA funds? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you so much, Mayor Narkowitz, for that update. I know we all have been eagerly wanting to, uh, know what the plans are. So thank you. Um, moving on, we are up to the consent agenda. I'll read the consent agenda and ask for removals for discussion because there's no discussion on the consent agenda. First up, we have minutes of September 2nd, 2021. Um, and then we have appointments to various committees. These have all received a positive recommendation from the city services committee. Um, the first one was withdrawn at Appleton's request. So for energy and sustainability commission, Benjamin Wheel, while, Will, uh, 123 Audubon Road in Leeds, uh, July 2021, June 2024, this is a reappointment. Planning board Melissa Fowler, 87 Chesterfield Road in Leeds. Um, full member term, July 2021, June 2024, this is a reappointment. Christian Tate, 46 Upland Road in Leeds, associate member, July 2021, June 2024. That is also a reappointment. Transportation and Parking Commission, Jamie Albro Fisher, 50 Manhattan Street. Um, July 2022, June 2023, a reappointment. Adam Novitz, 17 Hooker Avenue. July 2021, June 2024, and also a reappointment. To the zoning board of appeals, David Bloomberg, 86 Vernon Street, July 2021, June 2024. Uh, that is a reappointment. And appointment of Pamela Powers as city clerk. This is for referral to city services. Um, and appointment to the council on aging. This is also for referral. Uh, Carolyn Sandel, 132 Chesterfield Road in Leeds. That term, October 2021, June 2024, and that is to, to fill a vacancy. That is the consent agenda. I asked for two removals, um, Adam Novitz and Pam Powers.
Move to, um, approve the consent agenda minus the two removals.
Motion's made by Counselor Dwight, I think seconded by Counselor Mayory, uh, roll call please on the consent agenda.
Oh, you're muted.
Hold on.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Oh, looks like Counselor Jarrett also, hold on, unmuting. There we go.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinnlin.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay.
Move a rule for referral of Pamela Powers.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded for the appointment of Pamela Powers is a referral, um, as city clerk. There's referrals to city services committee. Um, and I will just make the disclosure that Pamela Powers has contributed to my campaign, but that doesn't exclude me from voting on this referral. Um, but I'm disclosing that. Any other, uh, discussion on this referral to city services? Seeing none. Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counsel, Counselor Quinnlin.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes, and, uh, move to approve the appointment of Adam Novitz.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Jarrett. I will also disclose that Adam Novitz contributed to my campaign. Doesn't exclude me from voting on this appointment, but I am disclosing that information. Any other discussion on this appointment? Seeing none. Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinnlin.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Okay. We are done with the consent agenda and those removals and we will now recess for the committee on finance. Laura, when you're ready, will you please take the role of finance?
Okay. Counselor Labarge.
Here.
Counselor Quinnlin.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Here.
Okay. We are in finance and the first item is the approval of minutes from our previous meeting, which was September 2nd, 2021.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Any discussion on these minutes? Seeing none. Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinnlin.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, those pass and moving on to financial orders, we're at 21.320 in order to suspend parking fees on certain days. And this is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz. Ordered that on the following days, collection of fees for on-street and off-street parking spaces, excluding the EJ Garrett parking garage shall be suspended. These days are Saturday, November 20th, 2021 for Bag Day, Friday, November 26th for Black Friday, Saturday, November 27th for Small Business Saturday, Friday, December 24th for Christmas Eve and Friday, December 31st for New Year's Eve. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Um, these are fairly self-explanatory, but is anyone? Uh, Counselor Quinnlin?
I do have a question for the mayor about, uh, not opening the parking garage on those days as well. What, what sort of income does the parking garage generate on those days? And, uh, is it, uh, what, what, what's the reason for, uh, not making that free as well?
So the parking garage, um, it's, it's primarily a system, um, issue because the, the parking garage, you know, is a 24/7 self-operating facility. Um, and so people park and especially during winter, when people put their car in there during, um, you know, winter hours. And we also have leased spaces in there as well, keep a certain amount of spaces that people pay, uh, leases for. Um, uh, people who live downtown or work downtown. Um, so, um, we've always taken the position that, um, you know, anytime we do any of these types of suspensions, it's challenging to close, to shut the garage off. Um, uh, again, because of leased spaces as well as, again, there's people that park for multiple days, um, because of winter weather. Um, and so we've always just focused on either on-street or off-street lots. Um, and so that's, that's the rationale for why the parking garage has not been part of that.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes, uh, Mayor, um, I had the concerns that Counselor Quinnlin had. Okay, I could see why we could not, people who do pay for parking monthly and they, they pay quite a mi, bit of money to pay monthly. Why couldn't they, the ones I'm talking about who pay for the parking? Why could they also be suspended for these days, just these parking days that you want to suspend? Why wouldn't they get, uh, a benefit out of that?
Um, you know, the, the, um, obviously the goal of this, uh, to support local businesses is to promote, uh, you know, retail, uh, commerce and restaurants and, you know, uh, try, you know, and, uh, make it easier for folks who want to come down and buy local and support local businesses, um, you know, during these key, uh, shopping days, uh, during the holiday season, um, as well as just, you know, dining, et cetera. Um, you know, the lease program is really for, um, you know, businesses and offices, uh, people that, you know, purchase lease, uh, passes for, you know, their, themselves and their staffs or people who live downtown, uh, year-round, um, and want to have, um, a place. So it's really two different things. And so, um, again, waiving the lease, uh, it's not easy to waive for five days because you've got, you know, people buy these things, uh, in multi-month, uh, leasing. So we just see them as two different, uh, types of people utilizing the parking system. Um, so that's why it's never been, um, part of this.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none. Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinnlin.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with the positive recommendation and we're at 21.321. This is an order, an order authorizing the lease of rooftop space on Bridge Street, Leeds, Ryan Road, um, elementary schools for solar photovoltaic arrays. Ordered that whereas Mayor Narkowitz committed the city council and the city council endorsed a goal for North Hampton to be a net carbon neutral city by 2050. Whereas installing solar, uh, photovoltaic arrays on school facilities will reduce greenhouse gas and carbon emissions resulting from, from school operation. Whereas in order to avoid unnecessary costs, it is best practice that a roof that is slated to hold a solar photovoltaic array have sufficient life remaining so that re-roofing is unlikely to be needed during the lifetime of that solar array. Whereas Bridge Street Elementary, Leeds Elementary and Ryan Road Elementary Schools have all recently undergone roof replacements and thus re-roofing is unlikely to be needed during the lifetime of solar photovoltaic arrays installed on said roofs. And whereas our city residents, Maury Pippin and Brian Adams, acting through Pippin Adams LLC, have generously offered to fund the installation of three solar photovoltaic arrays on the roofs of Bridge Street Elementary, Leeds Elementary and Ryan Road Elementary Schools. And a six-year lease is a condition precedent to the grant and a, a grant of the array as a gift to the city. And whereas on September 9th, 2021, the North Hampton City School Committee voted unanimously to surplus the three school roofs in support of this important renewable energy project. Whereas Mass General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 16, requires a vote of the city council to surplus any interest in public property prior to its disposal. Now therefore be resolved, the city council does their surplus, a leasehold interest in the roofs of Bridge Street Elementary School located at 2 Parsons Street, North Hampton, Leeds Elementary School located at 20 Leeds Elementary School located at 20 Florence Street in Leeds, and Ryan Road Elementary School located at 498 Ryan Road, Northampton, and authorizes the mayor to execute a six-year lease for said roofs on such terms and conditions as the mayor deems reasonable subject, however, to the following restrictions. One, the leasee will be responsible for the care, repair, and maintenance of the solar photovoltaic array for the duration of the lease. And two, at the conclusion of the lease, the leasee shall gift the solar photovoltaic array to the city of Northampton. Is there a motion?
Move a positive recommendation to the full council?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Quinlan, seconded by Councilor Thorpe. There also are pictures, Laura, I don't, if you could maybe sort of cycle through the three rooftop pictures, I thought they were pretty great. And Mayor Narkowitz, you want to tell us about this very generous gift?
Yes, well, councillors may recall my coming to you with a similar surplus order for the senior center roof. And again, Brian Adams and Maury Pippin have generously donated that system to the senior center as part of this nonprofit that they formed, and they've been, they've been installing solar systems on roofs of nonprofits all throughout the region as part of this program. And so it's structured with a six-year lease, which then allows them, as part of their business model, to be able to cover the costs and recoup some of the costs to then be able to reinvest back into other systems. So obviously, they're back at it again with these three systems. The school department would save, we project about $4,000 a year on energy costs, plus an unknown amount of reduced demand charges. Putting that in terms of greenhouse gas emissions reduction, our Energy and Sustainability Officer estimates that the three arrays annually would offset the same amount of greenhouse gas emissions as produced by five school buses each year. Or alternatively, would offset 15 times the amount of greenhouse gas emissions produced by the schools, one for a transit van. So it's an incredibly generous donation that obviously fits in with our goals as a city to to create more renewable energy and and cut down on greenhouse gas emissions. So obviously, the school committee was very, very happy and grateful to accept this gift and took their vote to surplus. And now I come to you for the corresponding surplus vote so that we can go ahead with the install. I can report that the senior center array, similar, similar-sized array saved us about 3,236 electricity costs during its first year of operations, which was actually more than had been originally projected. So so that project has been very beneficial, and I I believe these three solar arrays will also be extremely beneficial to the city.
Excellent, thank you, Councilor Dwight.
One offset that's worth mentioning that usually gets bypassed is that a rooftop array doesn't go and cut trees, which are carbon sequestration systems. It doesn't denude land that may be considered underused or underutilized. It is, it's the, it is the smallest impact with the best return. And the fact is, is this has been discussed forever, and I'm, I think, you know, and that, and and I, that offset is not even part of the calculation that we include when we're doing these assessments about the value of this. This is a commitment the city made some time ago. I'm very glad to see this partnership that's been established and that, and very grateful for the opportunity to take advantage of these systems that that conform with our our plan to reduce not only our carbon footprint, but at the same time also provide access to energy, cost savings, of course, as well. So I I felt that was worth mentioning. It's not something we frequently comment on when we, when we talk about these things. And and all further systems that we continue to do that are applied on rooftops really are the highest return of our our investment, our social investment and our monetary investment.
Well said. Councilor Jarrett.
Yeah, this is, this looks like a great project, so glad they're continuing with this work. Have a question around, so they're setting the size. It certainly looks like a larger size would fit on some of these roofs. Is that just that the way their business model works, they they can only do a certain size at a time? And, you know, we're not precluded in the future from adding more, I assume, in any way, given that the, there is a size that that they are proposing here.
Mayor Narkowitz?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, you cut out Councilor Jarrett for some reason, I'm not sure why. So could you, could you repeat the question I saw? Apologize, I.
Sure, no, no worries. The size of the system, it looks like there's more space on the roof, on the roofs than and that could be installed, but is the size of the system just what they're willing and able to do at this time?
Um, I think that, I think that it's a, it's a fairly, you know, rudimentary drawing, and I know we do have, there's other systems on the roof, air handling systems and other utilities, I believe, to work around, as well as drains and other issues. So really, I I think this was the, and also orientation, et cetera, like what the, what the best orientation would be and angling of the arrays. So my understanding is that this is sort of the, the, the best use of these, of these roofs and the maximal use. And obviously, the price is right, so, so, yeah, so that's my understanding of how the sizing of these were done. And and obviously, you know, they're also trying to spread these systems out throughout Northampton and throughout the valley as well. But that's my, that's my understanding of how they landed on these sized arrays on these roofs.
Great, yeah, that that's helpful. And they are, they're choosing the installer, they do all that. The city doesn't have any, any decision-making in that, right?
That's correct. They, they have, they have an agreement with an installer and, and so that's, they've, they've developed a relationship that with an installer who sort of shares their, their goal and their mission, and so they've kind of, so that's how the process works. So, you know, that's why we're, we're leasing the rooftop to them, and they're, they're responsible for, you know, installing and maintaining for the first six years, the system, and then they turn it over to us. So, yeah, that's, we, we don't have a role in that.
Thank you.
Councilor Labarge.
Yes, Mayor. I would like to know, and I think you probably would be able to answer this. I, I want to thank the two residents for doing what they're doing. I think it's so valuable. And I agree about what I heard from Councilor Dwight tonight about putting it on the roof and so forth and saving money here. How much, say if we had to go ahead and hire somebody to do the schools and place solar area on it, how much do you think it would cost to do that type of work?
You know, I, I.
Get an idea, because I think it's great with what they're doing here versus what it would cost us to hire somebody to come in and place all the solar on the roof.
You know, I, I, I can't give you a, an exact estimate for it. I mean, I can just sort of think about similar projects, you know. You know, I would guess for each system, it's, you know, it's got to be on the order of, of, you know, between $20,000 and $40,000, probably. I, I don't know.
I think.
Obviously, they're, they're purchasing, you know, in bulk because they're able to get the economy of scale of that, so, you know, versus like a household install. But again, that's just a rough estimate. Chris Mason could probably give you a better estimate. But, but, yeah, so, but the best part, of course, is we don't have to worry about that because it's, they're paying for it. But it's, it's definitely a significant gift when you, when you talk about these three arrays, plus the one on the senior center, plus all of the maintenance for the next, you know, six years on the system, and, you know, all the electrical and all the other parts that go into it. So, so it's definitely a significant gift.
It is, and I thank them very much for what they're doing.
Councilor Maori.
I just feel compelled to say that, you know, when some have said that our climate goals in Northampton are too lofty, this is how we do it. I mean, it's the big things, it's the big, it's not just what city government's doing, it's what we all do as a community. I mean, this is a big thing Maury and Brian are able to do for us, but it's the little things too, and that is how we're going to get, get there. Us all being creative, you know, generous and committed to this together. So I just find this really heartening, and thanks to Maury and Brian.
Awesome, very well said. Any other answer questions on this remarkable thing that they're doing for our community? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please, Laura, on a positive recommendation.
Councilor Labarge.
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councilor Shara.
Yes.
And Councilor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, then move forward with the positive recommendation, and we are at 21.322. In order to authorize borrowing 1.09 million for the new fire ladder truck. Ordered that 1,097,660 is appropriated to pay cost of acquiring a fire ladder truck, including all costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow a set amount under Chapter 44, Section 71 of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority and issue bonds or notes of the city, therefore. That the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary or convenient to carry out this project, and that any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs of the project approved by this order in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, and thereby reduce the amount of authorized borrowing by a like amount. Is there a motion?
Move a positive recommendation to the full council?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Quinlan, seconded by Councilor Thorpe. There also is a memo from Chief Gavin, but Chief Gavin is here. So I, Chief, I am happy to read your memo, but if you would like to just talk about it and give us your overview of this project, that's also fine. What's your pleasure?
Sure, I can speak about it, Counselor. Great, thank you very much, and I really do appreciate allowing me the time to speak tonight. So I did put this memo together at the request of the mayor. Our current ladder is 2003, so it's almost 20 years old now. We've run into some significant repair costs. We did spend some significant money on it a couple of years ago, and we just got some bad news again yesterday. We had the, in the memo, you know, I put that it's, you know, around about $50,000 to repair the current problem. My mechanic's been working with the E1 vendor, who's the manufacturer of the ladder out in North Andover. And I'm just, he, he said that we're looking at between $65,000 and $80,000 because we need to update the entire aerial control system. And so that includes like the turntable where the ladder sits on the truck, all the way to the platform at the top. So that's, you know, quite a bit higher than we had learned a couple of weeks ago, and we, you know, recognized that we were having these significant issues. Unfortunately, you know, our mechanic's been doing a great job, he's been getting it back in service, but it seems like every time we go to use it, it'll go up six, eight feet, it may rotate a little bit, and then it just, it, for lack of a better word, the ladder basically just loses its positioning. So as it's kind of a safety feature, it just shuts down so that, you know, it won't injure anybody. The mechanic will then be called, and he can override that system manually by lifting the cab of the truck and getting under there and doing it. Obviously, he's the only one that we want or allow to do that. But it's, it's just not safe at this point. We developed a committee here in the department, so I had two of my deputy chiefs, my training captain, and two firefighters who have been working with three different vendors, Pierce, E1, and Ferrara. And the last three fire engines that we've purchased have been Pierce's, and we've had great luck with them, we've had very few problems with them. So we're leaning towards purchasing this new ladder, the Pierce ladder. One of the significant issues we have here in North Adam, in Northampton is the low bridges. Right, so we have to have a ladder, and actually, two of our firefighters are on the committee, Dustin Culver and Brian Davis, were working one night. They went out late at night when traffic was low, and they actually measured each bridge, each low bridge in multiple different areas of the bridge, so that we had a solid number of the height of all the bridges. So our ladder actually needs to be 11 feet high or less, which, you know, most of them you're going to see are 11'4", 11'6", a little bit bigger. So it's really, it's kind of a custom-built ladder for us. And, you know, if, if we couldn't get under those bridges, we're looking at leaving headquarters and would have to go all the way down, you know, down King Street, and we'd have to go around the city around by the industrial park onto Bridge Street and come back around to get to that section of the city, which obviously is not ideal. So Pierce, you know, the ladder that they proposed to us is, comes in right at 11 feet, it'll fit under all the bridges. It's not as, it doesn't have as many features and as fancy as the one we currently have. The one we currently have actually has a water tank in it that holds 500 gallons of water. It has a pump to pump that water, so it could, you know, it can kind of work as a fire engine also, right, if we needed it, because it does have the water. But again, we've had problems with the pump, we've had problems with the tank leaking, we've had leaking connections. And honestly, we, with the committee, we decided we really don't need to go that route again. And if we did, you're looking at probably, conservatively, for a ladder like that, it's probably 1.5, 1.6 million. So we feel like we can just, we can get away with this, just, it's a true ladder. There's no water in it, it does have a pre-piped waterway up the ladder, so obviously, we can, we'll hook a hose to it and we'll run water through it. But it doesn't have the pump and the actual water tank on it. It'll be a true ladder, and it actually gives us a lot more room, you know, if you, you remove the pump and you remove the water tank, gives us a lot more space, compartment space, to add equipment, and it'll give us a little opportunity to carry a few more ground ladders that we haven't been able to carry in the past with this current ladder. So, you know, I think the Pierce is, is the way to go. And actually, E1 came back with a ladder, you know, our committee met with them and everything, told them, you know, explained the heights, and they still built us a ladder that was 11'4". So, you know, we automatically disqualified them. The Ferrara, you know, I've heard mixed things from, from different chiefs about the Ferraras. So, you know, we're not really familiar with them, my mechanic isn't familiar with them, you know, he knows the Pierce inside and out. So, you know, it just makes sense to, to keep the fleet the same, and, you know, that's kind of where we're at with this new Pierce. So right now, I just, I don't trust this ladder. It actually, every morning, the shift, you know, they run all the power equipment, saws, jaws of life. They actually take the ladder out back, set it up, spin it around, make sure it's working. And again, this morning, I, I texted the mayor, and I said, well, they got it up eight feet, and it died again. So I know I spoke with Councilor Labarge this morning, and she asked me, it was a great question, right, what's your plan? And right now, my mechanic's going to get it back in service, hopefully tomorrow. We're going to sit down and try to figure out, you know, how, what we can do to kind of get it back in service, so it's, we can at least get it on scene. But right now, we're relying on Hadley. So Hadley has been great, Chief Spankable over there, Holyoke, and we also have East Hampton has a ladder. So for any call, if it's a reported fire, a possible fire, smoke in the building, we are calling them automatically. So whichever community is closer to that scene, we'll call, and they'll send their ladder right away. So if ours gets there and all of a sudden doesn't work, at least we've got another one on the way. So that's currently what we're doing right now. It's not ideal, we're going to try to come up with a solution here in the next couple of days with the one we have. But that's, that's really where we are right now with this one, the current ladder.
Thank you. Thank you. And to that point, when could, when could this new one be delivered?
Well, that's another problem, the new one, with all the delays and, you know, COVID has, has really stretched the, the manufacturers pretty thin. They're saying conservatively 18 months.
Wow.
You know, that's why the mayor felt it was important to, to do this as soon as possible. So we're looking at at least 18 months to get this new ladder, so we really do have to come up with a solution to kind of get us by here. But in it, that, with the Pierce, and it would be no different with any other vendor, you know, they just, some, they just can't get parts. And, you know, they're having issues building the trucks. We're, we're still waiting on a new ambulance that's been delayed forever just because they can't get certain parts for it. So, yeah, it's, it's quite a long build time, councillor.
Wow. Um, well, we're, we're very grateful for that mutual aid that you just talked about that's helping us get through that. Uh, Councillor Dwight and then Councillor Labarge.
Thank you, Chief. Um, the, a large amount of the inventory, building inventory that would require a ladder response, uh, is on the Smith College campus, I believe. I mean, of course, I've been constituted downtown, but a significant portion of that is rendered necessary, that, that type of apparatus, we need that apparatus in order to accommodate uh, the issues that are presented on the campus, I would say.
Absolutely. You know, obviously all of Main Street downtown and, and really any of your larger homes. And I had a conversation with the finance director, Charlene Nardi, this morning and she kind of asked the same question. You know, obviously, you know, you have a house fire, say in Leeds, you know, it's a, a single story, straight three-bedroom ranch, you know, obviously, you know, we could get away without the ladder truck, right? But, you know, you get downtown to some of these larger homes and some of these larger buildings. You know, if we, if we need that ladder to rescue people from, you know, higher, you know, third floors, fourth floors, we need that, we need that ladder ability.
Thank you. I mean, I, uh, I'm being a little coy here. I mean, I know in the past that we've had, uh, uh, payment in lieu of taxes offers from Smith College, particularly devoted to apparatus that would serve them specifically in the event of a, an emergency and I'm just sort of tickling that a little bit. That's all. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Councillor Labarge.
Yeah. Chief, I want to thank you very much for talking with me today. When I read that memo, memo, I had great concerns here and, um, you made me really understand how bad that this fire ladder truck is in such bad shape. And I, what really bothered me was knowing that it was going to take eighteen months to order that. And you explained very thoroughly to me because I had great concerns that how would we operate with a fire ladder truck? When we're looking at the condition that it's in and also for helping in saving residents' lives and also our firefighters. And I am so happy and thankful that you did talk with me. You called me right back and that's valuable here. And I am going to support this. I have always supported and even with Councillor Bill Joy, as long as he's been a councillor. We've always supported the equipment for our fire department because it's you and the fire department and your maintenance who know what is needed to help and save people's lives in our city and also our ambulances right down the line. So thank you very, very much for being here this evening and speaking. And I am supporting this with a high recommendation to full city council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I appreciate that.
Mayor Narkowitz. Oh, you're muted, mayor.
I just wanted to speak briefly about sort of the form here that we're using. Um, so in order for the chief to, 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 to just put in the order to start the bill to get, you know, to begin that process of, of building this thing, you know, um, we can't sign a contract without a funding source. Um, so that's sort of why we're bringing this to you under sort of, you know, out of sequence that we normally would for the capital plan. And, and we're seeking a funding, basically a borrowing authorization, uh, which then would allow us, having that borrowing authorization would allow us to sign a contract. Obviously with the eighteen-month lead time, we wouldn't necessarily go out to bond right away. And in fact, you know, as we go through the capital improvement process, um, you know, it may be that we may use a, a different mechanism for funding or we may, um, you know, so, but I just want you to know that, you know, the reason for wanting this as a bond authorization is just so that we have a, we have the ability to sign a contract. Um, and again, um, this would be something that would normally appear on a capital plan, but given the emergency nature, um, we wanted to get it in process, uh, right away. So, um, I don't, I don't think, and I also, you know, I didn't make the request, but I think, you know, the sooner we can get this, uh, this thing ordered, the better. Um, obviously you've got a meeting in a couple of weeks, so that's fine too. But I think, you know, hearing from the chief, the concern, um, I think every, every day is important in terms of getting this in process. Um, Chief, you have another, you have an engine that's been under construction as well, right? Um, and so that, how long has that one been in construction?
So that is being built currently right now and we're hoping that next month we can go out there for the final inspection. So we're hoping to have it by the end of the year. And again, that one, that one was delayed also. It's, you know, and unfortunately it's not, you know, it's not just our department. Everybody's waiting on apparatus, so.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Mayory. Chief, what is the expected range of, um, life, lifespan for a fire ladder?
Um, you know, it's usually, yeah, again, it goes, it depends on how much you use it. We don't run our ladder on every call. We really kind of cross staff it with folks from the ambulance. So we don't put a ton of miles on it or a ton of hours on it. Um, you know, if we get a call for a fire or suspected fire or, you know, smell of smoke, something like that, then we will take it. So, you know, that's the good thing is we don't, we don't run them into the ground like, you know, say like Boston would or, or a larger city. So, you know, I, we should, we've gotten almost twenty years out of this one and it's been the biggest headache I've ever, I've ever seen. But, uh, you know, conservative, I'd say, hey, we buy this one, we get another twenty years out of it. Hopefully more, you know, it's, it's not going to have the water and the pump and the stuff like that that was, has caused us problems in the past. So, uh, you know, less things to go wrong. So I'm hopeful.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that.
Councillor Quinlan.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Um, you know, like Councillor Labarge, I think this is important and intend to support it. But I just want to be clear, when you say eleven feet, you mean it would even get under Councillor Nash's truck eating bridge?
It will. Yes, it will. Yeah, you know, and those two firefighters went out on their own, you know, and they were working at their shift and they went out late at night when there was no traffic and, you know, they took it upon themselves to make sure that we had accurate numbers and, you know, we're not going to get the ladder here and then get to a bridge and be like, oh, boy. So, you know, I appreciate.
We've seen trucks have to back up Main Street before.
Yeah.
We don't want it to be a fire truck too.
Uh, we don't want to do that, so.
Well, thank you.
They put in some good work for us. I appreciate it.
Councillor Nash, you want to talk to the bridge?
I, I appreciate, I appreciate that we're, we're looking for vehicles that can make it over to Ward Three. And, uh, so thank you for that. And I can verify that is the height of those bridges. I've been out there with people with tape measures as well. And, um, I, I, this is just one of those situations where it's like you got a house and, and the boiler goes or, you know, or the car breaks down, you know, it's, it, this, this just looks like we need to make this investment. There, it's just clear as day and it's, it's regrettable that we have to make it right now. And, um, and, and, and it does, I, I do see due diligence around, um, all of the, you know, the, the, the work that's gone into trying to keep this vehicle working and operating and, and it's, it's also concerning that, you know, when out on calls that it stopped operating. And, um, and that thus far, um, we haven't had anything terrible happen. But that, um, that, yeah, this, this seems to be something we need to get corrected. Um, and, um, so that, um, we, we have equipment that works and, and people don't get harmed. So, um, thank you for the, uh, the, the, uh, the report that just kind of laid it out to us that, you know, as the stewards of the city, we, we're going to have to suck it up here. So.
Yeah, I appreciate it councillor and believe me, you know, the last thing I want to do is call the mayor with a million dollar problem.
Yeah, I, I, I get it.
Thank you.
Okay, councillors, any other questions or comments on this fire ladder truck? Seeing none, roll call please Laura on a positive recommendation.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
And Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with the positive recommendation and we are at twenty-one point, oh, hold on, just disappeared on me. Okay. Twenty-one point three two three, in order to acquire surplus and dispose of a certain property located at thirty-three King Street. This is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz and Office of Planning and Sustainability. Whereas, uh, chapter three forty-five of the Acts of twenty twenty authorized.
Of course, Shara.
Yeah.
Um, even though I have no financial interest in this matter, I do have to recuse myself from hearing this matter because of my employment with the Commonwealth. So I have to step up.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. Um, uh, okay, the Acts of twenty twenty authorized Massachusetts Department of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance to transfer thirty-three King Street, the former probate and family court to the City of Northampton with a formula for splitting the proceeds of the ultimate sale of the land between the city and the Commonwealth. And whereas the land we transferred has shown lots one, two, three, six and seven on a plan entitled but Plan of Land in Northampton, Mass, prepared for the Hampshire County Commissioners dated January thirty-first, nineteen seventy-two and recorded in the Hampshire Registry of Deeds in Plan Book eighty-three, page ninety-five. Um, whereas consistent with the city's sustainable Northampton comprehensive plan, this property provides a critical redevelopment opportunity for downtown Northampton with a reuse that can advance downtown vibrancy. Whereas redevelopment of this property is the core, in the core of the central business district, has the potential to advance economic development, downtown vibrancy, housing, affordable housing and other important city interests. Order that the mayor is authorized to accept a deed or other instrument of commands for the property located thirty-three King Street in accordance with and subject to the provisions of such a twenty twenty, uh, sec, uh, chapter three forty-five. And further, the city council declares the property located thirty-three King Street surplus to city needs and further that the mayor is authorized to transfer, subject to retained easements and restrictions as the mayor deems reasonable, the property at thirty-three King Street for redevelopment, which may include but is not limited to parking, commercial uses, marketing, market and affordable housing, streetscape improvements, shared use plan, path access and/or other redevelopment opportunities consistent with state requirements. Further, mayor is authorized to execute such documents and instruments as may be necessary to achieve the purposes of this order. Okay, is there a motion?
I would like to make a positive recommendation to full city council.
Second.
Most made by Councillor Labarge, seconded by Councillor Quinlan. Mayor Narkowitz, this has been a bit of a time coming.
Yeah, this has been, uh, one of those slow, slow roasting, uh, state projects that seems to take forever, um, especially when it involves, uh, state property, um, as we know from the recent, uh, recent affordable housing projects that, you know, took us several sessions of the legislature to finally get over the finish line. Um, so I had probably my earliest meeting with DCAM back in, you know, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, uh, where they approached the city about this. As you may know, um, the trial court system uh, made the decision to, to basically abandon, abandon the building at thirty-three King Street, which is obviously home to the family and probate court as well as the, you know, Hall of Records, the Registry of Deeds. Um, uh, because of a series of issues with the building. Um, and so they went through a process of, uh, putting out an RFP and, and selecting a developer to basically build and lease them a new court, uh, out on Atwood Drive, um, for the court system. And then, um, and then the registry of deeds, um, had a similar or smaller process um, and relocated the registry of deeds, um, over to, uh, off of Pleasant Street, uh, in the Gleason Building. Um, and so the building is empty and so we began having conversations with the state about, um, what would happen with this particular property. Obviously it's in the heart of our downtown. It's a, it's a, it's a, you know, large parcel, all the various parcels combined total about, you know, one and a half acres. Um, prime in the heart of our downtown with, um, significant, um, access to transportation and, uh, close to rail, close to, you know, uh, transit, et cetera. So, um, obviously we had concerns about is the building going to sit empty for ten years or twenty years? Um, and/or is it going to be, you know, sold by the state or marketed by the state? Um, who may not have, uh, necessarily, you know, um, a good understanding of what, what our needs and vision are for um, our historic downtown. So the state, um, over the years has a, has begun this, um, program um, of, of, of surplusing and, and redeveloping, uh, state-owned properties, um, or across the Commonwealth, uh, whether it's old courthouses or, or other properties owned by them, uh, where they basically, um, reached an agreement to transfer the property to the, to the community itself um, and, and put the community in the driver's seat, the city in the driver's seat in terms of, uh, surplusing and redeveloping the property. Um, and then at the end of the process, um, after all of the, you know, costs of that are taken into account, um, we essentially share the profits with the state, uh, fifty-fifty in terms of, you know, whatever, whatever it ends up being that is netted as part of the project. Um, so, um, so I, after, um, after much going back and forth with DCAM about how this would work, um, then we had to actually file special legislation. Um, and, um, so legislation was actually filed by DCAM, by the governor, um, to basically effectuate this transfer and, and not utilize the normal, um, you know, building disposition, uh, processes that they would use. Um, it, the bill made it through the legislature, got signed by the governor at the very end of the last session, like right around New Year's time. Um, and the law said that the D, that DCAM basically had one year until, uh, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one to transfer the property. Um, and they've basically, you know, taken, uh, taken that time, let's just say. Um, you know, we've been, uh, communicating, the city's listener's been communicating with their legal team. Um, and so we finally, we think have, um, have the disposition documents that are necessary to sort of finalize this. Um, so basically what this order does, uh, you know, in order for the city to accept real property, to accept, you know, a, a gift of sorts of property, um, that requires an acceptance by the city council. Um, and then, you know, like the earlier vote on the roof, we then, in order to then, um, redevelop it, we're basically turning around and immediately surplusing it to city needs. Um, so that then we can be in a position, uh, to go to begin a, a, a redevelopment process. Um, so, um, so that's what this order does. Um, you know, uh, you, you see listed in the order, uh, that there's a number of potential, uh, uh, uses that this property, um, could serve. Um, and so, uh, the next phase of this would be, um, you know, working, uh, with Director Fiden, um, on, uh, creating sort of an RFP of sorts, uh, to seat developers who might be interested in the project. I can tell you that, um, over the last four or five years, I've been approached by several developers already who are very, very, very interested in this property for housing, uh, for, uh, for commercial uses, for hotel uses. Um, so there are lots of people who have had their eye on this building. Um, and, um, and so I, I don't think that we will lack for, um, people that would be interested in trying to redevelop the property. If you know the building, um, uh, not only is it, um, you know, one of our sort of uglier, uh, uh, pieces of architecture, um, uh, from the Commonwealth's brutalist period, I guess, of architecture in terms of, uh, uh, the, the way they, I know, I know the, um, I know the, uh, historical commission has singled it out as, as an example of what not to build, uh, downtown. Um, I think it's listed, um, especially in the downtown architecture district as well. It's exactly the building we don't want. It's a, it's a building that's been modified. It's actually parts of the building are an old parking garage, uh, from back when there used to be a parking garage there. Um, and so, and the building has significant, um, I think some asbestos issues. So we suspect that the building itself would come down. Um, and, and then, you know, there would be the opportunity to, um, uh, to build something new there. Um, and, you know, we could have, you know, parameters around parking, et cetera. Um, and so I think it's an incredible opportunity for the city moving forward. Um, and we obviously would bring this property onto the tax rolls, uh, which would be good. It's obviously not a taxable property right now. Um, and it has the potential to, um, you know, create, uh, um, you know, economic development for the city, whether it's in commercial or, uh, residential or hotel motel. Um, it's got a lot of potential. So, um, obviously, uh, you know, this is a process that, uh, will take some time and, um, and will be something that, you know, will be one of the, one of the pieces that I will be transitioning to the next mayor. Um, but obviously because of the legislation, we have to get this piece of it completed by the end of the year, um, in order to meet the statutory deadline. Um, or else, uh, we'd have to go back to the legislature again. Um, and then, you know, who, who knows how long that would take to file, uh, to file a new bill again to start basically go back. Um, and then, you know, who, who knows how long that would take to file a, or to file a new bill again, to start basically go back to the beginning. So we want to get this piece taken care of, um, and then obviously, um, you know, as part of this transition, um, you know, the planning and sustainability will be working on an RFP. Um, and, uh, you know, we're already doing some initial work on the property in terms of identifying, uh, potential easements that we would need because of utilities that are under it, um, as well as doing an environmental assessment, um, just to make sure that there are no environmental, um, unknowns on the property as well. So that's what this is about, and, um, you know, Director Fiden is here as well if folks have questions, um, uh, about it. But, uh, this is really the, the first step in us, um, taking custody of the building, um, and then being in the driver's seat in terms of making sure that it's developed in the best interest of, of Northampton going forward.
Thank you. Okay, Council Jarrett.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. This seems like a great opportunity for downtown Northampton. Could you say a little bit more about the redevelopment process? Um, and how that, how it will be decided, what's going to go there? And also, will the council have any role in approving those uses?
You're muted, Mayor.
Sorry, I, I guess I, if Director Fiden wanted to step in here, I, I think it would be good to maybe hear his, uh, vision for this. I mean, obviously, the council, um, you know, we've, we've, we've had a role in terms of determining the kinds of uses that are allowed downtown, which are very broad, and, you know, we've, we've, over time, we've, um, you know, changed our zoning to, uh, really make more flexibility for what can and can't be done downtown. Um, but obviously, um, in terms of the process going forward, in terms of evaluating, uh, development proposals, um, I guess I'd, uh, that might be something for Mr. Fiden, uh, to speak more to in terms of, um, since he'll be likely carrying this process forward, um, into the new administration.
Director Fiden, there you go.
Okay, hi, thanks. Sorry, I'm on a phone, so it's not going to be as clear as when I'm on a computer. Um, so it's a, they're all good questions, and we're still working on it. Some of you know that we're going through the rapid recovery planning process for downtown recovery from COVID. Um, we have a public forum in that tomorrow night, and one of the things we've asked our consultants to do is give us recommendations as to what the best process is for going through an RFP process. Um, so we're sort of waiting for their presentation tomorrow and waiting for their report in the next couple of weeks to figure out exactly. Um, the short version is, we don't know what the uses will be, so we're not comfortable saying, for example, it has to be affordable housing, or it has to be, you know, commercial on the street. Um, so we have to do it as a request proposals of which price is only one of many criteria. Um, and, uh, my guess is we'll be working that RFP over the next couple of months, but the actual decision process is probably going to be, um, extending into the next, into the new mayor. Um, and so I'm just not comfortable at, you know, putting words in the next mayor's mouth for exactly what the process would be. Um, usually when we do an RFP process, ultimately, it's the city's procurement officer, Joe Cook right now, who makes the decision, but it's based on a very clear set of criteria. Usually it's a committee we put together who makes a recommendation to procurement officer that usually prevails. So I, I don't know, so the short answer is, I don't know exactly. I know the general process would go through.
Right, thank, thank you for that. Um, I'll just, you know, put out there that I, I do feel concerned that we're accepting this and then authorizing probably our next mayor, uh, to do this without any restriction on its ultimate use. Um, you know, affordable and attainable housing would be something I would like to see, uh, in some capacity or, or affordable commercial space. You know, I think our, our downtown's variety and vitality may be limited by the costs of commercial space. And some communities have created, uh, community land trusts that include commercial space to allow lower margin businesses to succeed. So I wonder if there's a way to kind of split the order in terms of, right now, we, we agree to accept it and surplus it and to start that process. And then ultimately, when it comes to, um, you know, what those criteria are, uh, that then the procurement officer would approve for the RFPs or, uh, maybe getting the order slightly, uh, mixed up, but that there's some council, um, input in that. I, I see in the past, you know, when we have surplus properties, we, we had a clear idea of, okay, it's going to go toward a community music center, for example. Um, and here, we're not really seeing yet what that clear idea is.
So I, I guess there's two answers. So to be clear, from a legal standpoint, yes, we absolutely could do that. We get, absolutely could have to go back to council for approval. I, I would be very concerned that it would scare away bids. So we, you know, Northampton, I, it's a really exciting property, but we're not a tier-one market. Um, and so we want to make sure that bidders know that they're not going to spend a lot of money, uh, because it is expensive putting together a bid and doing due diligence. So knowing that we have full approval from council, probably as significant to both the financial value of the property and the ability to attract good proposals. My suggestion, again, it's ultimately going to be the next mayor, would be to say, we're happy, at least on behalf of my department, which is all I can offer, that we're happy to pledge to involve council in the conversation and the discussions, but would prefer not to have a legal approval later that would, that would, you know, depress the market.
All right, thank you.
I s- I saw a hand before, Councilor Nash and Councilor Foster.
Thank you, Council President. Um, Director Fiden, um, yeah, this is, this is a long time coming. And, uh, I think that, um, the fact that it's a really ugly building actually enhances the ideas. You know, it's just like, there, there's nothing bad that could, worse that could happen here. So, um, and all ideas are on the table, and I, I see some of that reflected in the, um, in the, uh, proposal before us tonight. The thing I'd see missing there is, um, a language about a transit center. Because I know that was kicked around in the past. I know that, uh, Piner Valley Planning Commission had also, you know, at least talked about it. I don't know how much study they had put in on that. Uh, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's certainly worth looking at. My, you know, remember, it took us a long time to get the current Amtrak station, uh, developed. There's a few million dollars of money that's gone into the current station, um, first for the development and then the repaving of the parking lot. Um, I, and I'm not, I don't think this is a better site. The main reason we were looking at the site originally is we asked PVPC to look at the option for a full transit center, a multimodal facility. Um, and the circulation on this site, even with access from Main Street, didn't work very well. So it wasn't, it, it wasn't a good site to bring in, in buses. Um, and so the benefit that it might have had over Union Station wasn't really there. So you're, you're moving from one side of downtown to the other without necessarily any better access to transit. I mean, obviously, in this process, we would consult with PBTA and ask, has anything changed in terms of their bus radius and those kinds of things? Um, but at this point, there's no particular reason to think it's a better site that would encourage the Commonwealth to want to spend millions of dollars to move the station to it.
That's regrettable, and, um, but I, I understand what you're saying. There are, it, it, the turning radiuses, especially for the, the larger articulated buses, would be, would be pretty difficult. Um, uh, my, my second question, uh, Director, is, has to do with, uh, and it, it's piggybacking on Counselor Jarrett's, um, uh, thoughts around, um, so there's counsel, but then there's also just the general outreach. I mean, the people have been talking about this for years. You know, uh, people have mentioned parking garage. I mentioned the transit center, um, maybe, it may be another hotel. I don't know. That, um, having a, a venue, uh, where all of those ideas are voiced, and, um, I, I think, you know, uh, some sort of listening process is really important. Um, and, and I mention that because I, I think if we vote on this tonight and then hand it off, we're handing off the listening back to your department. And that, um, that I, 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 I think I'm comfortable doing that if, you know, if that's going to occur. So could you speak a little about how you picture listening and outreach to hear some of those ideas?
Yeah, so, so two things. Again, you know, because we'll be going through a mayor or a transition, you know, it's, it's, I mean, my department will coordinate the process, and absolutely having a listening process is a critical part of that, that piece. Um, you know, we both need to test what is the community want and what's the market prepared to do. So in terms of setting up the process, that's us, but who's listening? We, you know, we only advise the mayor. Um, and, and mayor and city council, but so ultimately, you know, we can summarize the voices we hear, we can create a process, but then we will be passing it on to the mayor, um, who would be the one who ultimately oversees that, that process. But, but, you know, our, our theory has always been that sunshine cures most things. So, you know, having a process, recording people's voices, recording, you know, reaching out to get people who wouldn't otherwise be at the table helps drive that process. Um, but obviously, the market's going to drive it as well. What, you know, what, what are people willing to invest in the process? Because I, I, I think the mayor explained this, but just so it's clear, because this pro- the way this process works, if the city had wanted to buy the property ourselves, the cost would be pretty astronomical. So just an example, the mayor mentioned the affordable housing at the state hospital. We actually had a piece of legislation through that would have transferred those laws to the city. And this, at, at appraised value, and the Commonwealth did an appraisal that came in somewhere between five hundred or six hundred thousand dollars. And that's why the mayor filed new legislation to have him transfer it to us for a dollar. So I don't think we'd be in a position to buy the property because we'd be paying, frankly, what seems like an inflated Commonwealth appraisal process and then be stuck tearing down the building. So we probably wouldn't take an ownership role, but we can sell the property with restrictions that may devalue it somewhat, like an easement to the bike path or parking in the weekends, or that kind of thing, which we currently have those two things right now. And it only costs us half as much as it would otherwise, right? So that the purchase price of the building goes down, we get, we lose half of that and the Commonwealth loses half of it. So thinking about this as a series of restrictions and easements as opposed to ownership is almost certain the path I think we want to go.
Thank you.
Uh, Council Foster.
To Director Fiden and Mayor for that information. And, uh, Councilors Jarrett and Nash actually, um, vocalized, um, my thoughts as well. Um, you know, I, I, I know the time is, is ripe, um, and it's, and it's great to see the potential for redevelopment of that property in that building moving forward. Um, it's awkward as a counselor to vote on, on the order authorizing all of these myriad of uses, um, you know, without knowing exactly what that process would be. Your explanation makes sense to me. Um, but I would, I would urge the planning department, I guess, because that's, that's where you're at, to really push, for, for a big public process, um, as you mentioned, to make sure that, that we're reaching voices that, that we may not otherwise hear, um, that the council is included, um, and that the public really has a say in, in, um, ultimately what the RFP is asking for, for proposals, as well as then, um, you know, opportunity to, to really see, um, or really weigh in meaningfully, um, in how that, that is used.
Thank you. I absolutely agree.
Uh, Councilor Doighton, Councilor LeBarge.
So since this is a partnership of sorts with the Commonwealth, and given the fact that the Commonwealth, of course, is in the past, well, that building's a perfect demonstration of what the Commonwealth thinks about abiding by community standards or, or decisions and in converting a parking garage without even matching cinder blocks as they raise it up and determine it to be even uglier built than it was before. They don't have, in the past, they've not demonstrated necessarily a concern about what it is Northampton cares about or values. Do they have the authority to put the kibosh on anything, given the fact that they're going to, and supposedly enjoy a share of the receipts? Uh, can they stop or turn the thumbs down on, uh, a proposal that we find appealing?
No, I mean, that, that's what's so wonderful about this process, is the Commonwealth, they, they know their own limits, and they know that they have a slow bureaucratic process. So their feeling of splitting the proceeds is it motivates us to not just, you know, to, to bring in some money. Um, and they think we're going to move faster. So as long as we're consistent with the legislation, which spells some things out about the process, um, and know it is our decision in the process. But that's why I would, we would suddenly change that if we said, no, we want to buy the property ourselves, because that would then put them back in the driver's seat.
Thank you.
Council LeBarge.
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I'm really to the point of, Wayne, when I talked with you today in regards, so that you could explain this to me, and especially about the RFP, and I understand all that part of it. I have to agree about the public process. I think that is extremely valuable here. And I know when and once you get together with the state deciding, because we're going to get half and they're going to get half, isn't there any way that when you make out the statements of what you feel to whoever before that property is put up for sale, that you could actually say, we want affordable house, these are the issues of affordable housing, um, say, businesses upstairs above it or whatever. I mean, we would actually have the rights of that opportunity to go ahead and speculate what we feel should be placed in that area, correct?
That's correct, and that's why this, the public process that all the council have been talking about, I absolutely agree. That's, that's a critical part of this.
I think it's absolutely necessary, and I think that the public process and city councilor should be involved in anything when it's really being involved with zoning, with development right down the line. So, thank you, Wayne.
Thanks.
Council Quinlan.
I, I just want to, I just want to recap here because I, I think I've heard a lot of things and, and, and a few of them contradict each other. And so I want to make sure I understand this in light of, of what a number of the counselors have said here in terms of getting public opinion. You know, the mayor mentioned he's been approached over the last number of years by many developers that are interested, or people that are interested in seeing this property developed. So he doesn't feel we're going to have a hard time finding someone to take it. And then the planning director here has told us that he's concerned that amending this order at all is going to depress the value. So are we depressing the value, or do we have a lot of possible takers? Uh, you know, I guess we don't really know. You know, we also have a new mayor, you know, we know we're going to have a new mayor coming in, in a few months, and we don't want to put words in the new mayor's mouth, and I, I agree with that. So I almost wonder if, if we couldn't think about what Counselor Jarrett said to remove part of this order and then make sure, and I, and I, I would just compliment my council colleagues, especially on, um, community resources of the great outreach they do, uh, in, in engaging the, the, the public on things. I think about the plastic reduction ordinance and just how much public input there was into that and how much discussion and education went into that, and wonder if, if the council shouldn't be involved in this at a little bit higher level than what we're being given on this order. Uh, and so lastly, I would just say that, you know, I'm, you know, I, I, I listen, listening to my council colleagues, and I wonder if, if there isn't, um, you know, really a good idea to, to think about, since, since we know we're not advancing this too far along until there's a new mayor in place, if we don't want to, you know, take a greater chunk of the, of the, uh, role here. So I, I'm not sure what to do exactly, but I'm just curious what my, what my colleagues think about that.
I can address just the first part of what you said, which was the question. I think the rest, you know, obviously is up to council. But, um, I, I think both are true. The mayor's right. There's a lot of people who've expressed interest in this property. But I would not underestimate the amount of money it costs to do due diligence to understand if proposal really works. And so for a developer to know that the city has the authority to sell the price, so uploading public process upfront absolutely makes sense because then we can do an RFP that says, for example, I'm making this up, I'm not suggesting this is the pro- for example, I'm making this up, I'm not suggesting this is a approach, that we're open to affordable housing and market rate housing. And we would accept a mark, an affordable housing project that pays 50% of the return that a market rate, I mean, we could, we could do those kinds of things. But going into a bidding process with uncertainty as to what the final outcome could be, the council could then kibosh it later. That's what would depress interest in it. So if somebody knows, you know, we can, we can have a hundred page RFP that spells out exactly what we want, some developers will pass and some won't. That's why having a process upfront and certainly counselors can be part of that makes a lot of sense. But making a clear statement that yes, at the end of this process, the property will be sold and won't go back, it wasn't a chance to say no, that, that's what would potentially ruin a lot of bids.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yeah, thank you Director Fiden for that clarification about, you know, where in the process. So yeah, my, my suggestion would be to have the council have an opportunity to weigh in with a, you know, to approve an order, not to write the RFP, but to sort of, you know, have the broad guidelines of what would be in the RFP and then the executive branch would take it all over and do the, do the bids and, and not be hindered, you know, that no, no potential bidder would be hindered, but yet we know we would have the public process. We know then that that, the results of, the general results of that public process could be something that the council could have the opportunity to approve.
Counselor Dwight.
Wayne or the mayor, how's this? How would this be different than any process that when we surplus properties, like we surplus a school? We, we weigh in the community ways and how they want to see that property reused and we develop an RFP predicated on that. And, and usually the RFPs are fairly narrow and descriptive. That's essentially the process that you're describing here. Am I right?
I think that's totally accurate with one difference, which is downtown, the universe of potential uses is much big and pretend, you know, you knew when you sold the South Street School, what the final use was gonna be. It could be very narrow. We, we just don't really know what the interest is gonna be and particularly for, if you say, I'm, I'm again sticking in housing example. We want affordable housing more than we want market rate housing, but how much more and how, and how do we think about that formula of how much less we're willing to take for affordable housing? So it just makes it more complex. And that's why my preference, the way we wrote this is yes, certainly we want the public deeply engaged and yes, certainly we want city council deeply engaged. But our preference is an order that doesn't, you know, so we will pledge to do that, but our preference is a clear statement that we get to listen to proposals that come in and so not having a later up or down vote.
I, I take your meaning. I, I understand that you're concerned, you've expressed your concern that having an up or down vote on a project specific as it's being, as we're negotiating a contract would, would certainly dampen enthusiasm for proposals or at least limit us for getting the, the best options available. So I mean, I, I don't see that we're actually in, in conflict here. I think we're all more or less agreed about how, what the goals are. And maybe, and I, and I actually don't see the approval of this order limiting those stated goals that have been, been, been shared. But at the same time, I, I think for people's peace of mind that it would be helpful to, and, and once again, with the caveat that we're, we don't want to basically speak for a mayor that doesn't exist yet. But at the same time, we can, we can, I think everyone will feel a little better if we have a, a general outline about the way this will proceed. For community input and then for the, the process of developing the RFP and then the final disposition of the property.
Counselor, or I guess this is for all the counselors. I'm just, I'm thinking out loud, so this would obviously not be for the first reading, but is there, would the counselors who want us to make that clear, be comfortable if we came up with another clause at the end, which says, you know, I think what we're saying, what we're all agreeing with is that the actual prospectarian RFP will be done in consultation with the community and with city council and the state, with diverse stakeholders.
Counselor Quinlan, you want to answer that?
Yes, I, I mean, I guess I, I, I think that's, that's pretty brilliant in all honesty, but I guess I would ask you to detail how.
That's, that's fair. I mean, I, I don't know the answer, but we will, as I say, we've, we've asked our consultants to help inform the process and that's gonna be part of it. So, you know, give me a week so I can sort of have tomorrow, tomorrow night's forum and, and think more about that piece. But you know, my preference, if council is willing and, and there's no absolute deadline, would be a first reading tonight. And then by the next council meeting, give us a chance to go back with language. Obviously if you don't like it, you could vote it down or amend it again.
Thank you.
I see some nods. Foster.
I, I thought I would speak the nod out loud to say, Director Fiden, that, that makes sense to me. You know, I would be comfortable voting positively on this, this evening and then understanding that, that we'd have a little bit more specific language for a second meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Maori.
I would agree with Counselor Foster. I guess when you said pledge, I, I, I I would like to see that kind of codified in the actual, you know, piece that we're voting on. So that's not something we have to kind of pin for later and remember and what we said. So I think, I think that would work if we're having two readings and that, that would satisfy me as well.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yeah, I'm also comfortable passing it or voting for it in first reading. But I do feel, I think it's partially because there's, we don't know yet who the new mayor will be and and there's, you know, been some concern about, about the actions regarding, you know, surplusing and and so I, it's something I need to think about and I look forward to your language and I, I hope that that will resolve my concerns, but, but I also, you know, just thinking about the idea of a, a further council, requesting a further council vote. And maybe we can, Director Biden, you and I can chat and about it in the meantime as well. But I just wanted to express that, that concern.
Okay, not seeing any other hands. So Laura, will you please take the roll? On a positive recommendation, right? That's where we still are? Yeah.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe. Oh, I'm sorry, he's recused.
Yes. Okay, great. That moves forward. Counsel. And we are at twenty one point three two six in order adding parcel on Mount Tom Road and Dyke Road to Connecticut River Greenway Historic Mill River. This is upon the recommendation of Mayor David Jean Arkowitz, Plan Sustainability and the Conservation Commission. Whereas the Open Space and Recreation Plan twenty nineteen, twenty twenty five recommends filling gaps within the Connecticut River Greenway Meadows and the Historic Mill River. And whereas the city acquired point four or five acres on the southwest corner of Mount Tom Road and Dyke Road map ID thirty nine A dash oh zero four eight. By judgment in tax lien case, the city, uh, City of North Hampton versus William Wilken, Hampshire Registry Book one thirteen two four seven, page one twelve on four twenty nine twenty nineteen. Whereas the parcel abuts other portions of, of the Connecticut River Greenway Historic Mill River. And its highest and best value is conservation. Order that the mayor is authorized to sign a deed to the city in North Hampton in the care and custody of the Conservation Commission for conservation and passive recreation purposes. Is provided by Master of Law, Chapter forty, section eight C.
Move a positive recommendation to the full council.
Second.
Mentioned by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Um, and Mayor, are you gonna talk about this or Wayne?
I guess Mr. Fiden, um, is he here? Uh, Mr. Fiden, sure. I'll, I'll turn to him. Um, I know where this property is, but he can speak to it and how he came into possession better than I can.
So this is a, a small piece of property. We actually appraised it almost a decade ago, thinking we would buy it by eminent domain because we couldn't track down an owner. And then we, we have a tax title group that meets regularly looking at properties that are behind in taxes. And the consensus of the group was cleaner just to go through land court. It's a property of low value. So the city's attorneys and, and the tax collector went through that process that completed about, I don't know, a year and a half ago. So the property became the city's property. We've assessed it to see if it has any other city uses. It has, uh, it's deep in the floodplain. It gets interstate drainage. So it doesn't, it's really not usable for anything else. We have given a right of entry to Mast dot. So as part of the exit eighteen or whatever X eighteen is called these days, construction project, they're gonna do a little bit of work on the edge. But otherwise, there's not really development potential for the property. This property butts some existing conservation area to the south. And so we just think the, the highest and best use is to merge it with that property. One of the minor benefits is we closed off Dyke Road to vehicles, I don't know, a decade or more ago. And that dramatically reduced trash dumping in the meadows. And I think some theft problems on Fort Street. Owning this property lets us more permanently close that road. We're able to gate it, but we couldn't actually get rid of the road. So it adds to conservation land and potentially gives us a permanent solution to the trash dumping problem we used to have.
Excellent. I remember being part of that conversation about that trash dumping problem years ago. Any questions or comments on this bit of land? Counselor Jarrett.
Um, if the road is removed, would you still envision a pedestrian access at that location?
Yes. Yes, a nice shortcut from Fort Street down.
Great, thanks.
There are questions? Okay, seeing none. Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with positive recommendation and that is closed out the finance agenda.
Move to adjourn, finance.
First made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Laura, roll call please on adjourning finance.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, we are now back in the full council and we're taking up those financial orders. So we're at twenty one point three two zero in order to spend parking fees on certain days. It's on first reading.
Move to approve.
Mentioned by Counselor Barge, seconded by Counselor Dwight. Any discussion on first reading? Seeing none. Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Okay, that passes on first reading. We're at twenty one point three two one in order authorizing the lease of rooftop space Bridge Street leads and Ryan Road Elementary Schools for solar PV arrays on first. Motion.
Second.
Made by Counselor LaBarge, seconded by Counselor Dwight. Discussion. Okay, seeing none. Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
And that passes in first reading and twenty one point three two two in order to authorize borrowing one point zero nine million dollars for new fire ladder truck on first reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
First made by Counselor Barge, seconded by Counselor Jarrett. Discussion. Seeing none. Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Second.
Passed in first reading. Uh, Counselor LaBarge made a motion, Counselor Jarrett seconded a motion to suspend rules. Any discussion on suspension of rules? Seeing none. Roll call please on spending rules, Laura.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Rules are suspended.
Move approval, second reading.
First made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor LaBarge for second reading. Any discussion on second reading? Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
All right, that passes in, in two readings. So Chief, go ahead and get that ladder ordered.
Yes.
To twenty one point three two three in order to acquire surplus and dispose of a certain property located in thirty three King Street. First reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
First made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Discussion on first reading. Seeing none. Roll call please, Laura.
Okay, since Counselor Thorpe is recused, Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes. Twenty one point three two six in order adding parcel on Mount Tom Road and Dyke Road to Connecticut River Greenway Historic Mill River. First reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
First made by Counselor LaBarge, uh, by Counselor Maori. Um, discussion on first reading. Seeing none. Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, that passes on first reading and we are moving down to ordinances not yet referred. Twenty one point three two five in ordinance relative to compensation for elected officials. Is there a motion to refer this matter?
So moved.
Yeah.
Second.
Uh, motion is made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Nash. Um, did I, Counselor Foster, did I see a hand?
Well, I did, but I was sort of raising my hand and thinking out loud, so. Um, but yeah.
Okay. So Jarrett.
The referral is to, just to legislative matters?
Is that, uh, Counselor Dwight, it's your motion.
Yes, um, I, I don't know if, if anyone has any other notions.
I don't, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion on referring this ordinance to legislative matters? Seeing none. Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Okay, that's been referred. Next word to zoning ordinances not yet referred. And remember, this also has to go to planning. Is there a, so sorry, twenty-one point three one nine in ordinance to amend, um, section three, uh, three fifty dash seventeen F, F, our district and three fifty-three dash for zoning map to include recreation land?
Move to refer, please. Uh, to, to legislative matters and planning, I'm sorry.
Okay, and where was that second?
Uh, second.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Maori, uh, Counselor Jared and Counselor Foster.
Uh, I would, uh, ask for a, a friendly amendment to also refer to, uh, community resources.
Sure.
Um.
I, I, that is, yes, I accept that as friendly.
Other discussion? Counselor Nash.
Yeah, I was hoping Wayne was still going to be here. I, I think he's, he's off trying to relax somewhere and, um, he's, he was calling him by phone. But, uh, that, um, yeah, it, because sometimes, uh, on this particular item, it, it seems to be pretty extensive all over the city where this introduction of this, of these new, um, this new zoning is. And I was curious as to what kind of outreach he was thinking of doing. Yes, uh, you know, referring it to community resources, we could do that. But anyway, I, that was going to be my question. So we weren't repeating something there.
Counselor Dwight.
It's, it's going to three committees, three public committee meetings for opportunity to discuss. If, if, and I would assume that someone from planning would be representative in each one, especially the planning board. Uh, be, so, there should be pretty decent access for conversation about this.
I agree, Bill.
Counselor Nash.
Um, yeah, I, I agree. We're offering a lot of opportunity for access to this. It's just, I mean, I'm sure it's still, it, it looks like that, that a lot of private property is involved here. And I'm just not quite sure how the word is getting out about this. I, I'm, that would be my question for, for, uh, Director Fiden. I, I say let's move forward with the referrals that we proposed and, um, and that, um, I can, make that request to Director Fiden about what he's thinking about doing around outreach. So.
And since it goes to community resources first, you could certainly ask him about that, uh, as it's moving through this process to Counselor Jared.
Yeah, I would just, just to say the, my reasoning for adding community resources is community resource, you know, we've had some really good, uh, zoning discussions there and it, it's, it offers kind of, I, I think of it as like a lower stakes kind of environment where there's, um, it's not a public hearing. There, there gets to be the, the good, good, uh, opportunity to, to have back and forth and, um, to, to have those two different bites, you know, the different focus, you know, one looking more at, at the community and the other looking more at the, um, the details of, of the zoning and the, and the, but the planning boards, uh, will, uh, perspective on it. So that's just my thinking of, of running, uh, that, that community resources as well.
Interesting perspective. I just want to make sure that people understand that public hearings are actually for the public. And so, you know, that is, they are meant to have that, that robust, you know, uh, interaction with the public. I don't want anyone to, to think otherwise. Other comments? Okay, seeing none. Roll call please, Laura. I'm referring this to community resources and legislative matters and planning.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And Counselor Jared.
Yes.
Okay, that is referred and we're at twenty-one point three one nine in ordinance to require, uh, installation of EV charging stations and parking lots, parking lots over twenty-five spaces. Is there a motion?
Move referral to legislative matters and community resources.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, um, Mayor Norquants, I saw your hand shoot up for a second, but it disappeared. Um.
I, I was just, I, I, Director Fiden did log off because I, I think he thought that other matter was just being referred. But he did communicate with me that they, planning will be notifying all property owners who own land in the proposed expansion area, uh, where the zoning would be expanded to include these recreation lands. So anyone who would be affected by that will receive a, a letter from planning notifying them of the proposed change. So just FYI.
Thank you. Um. We have a motion on this one, on EV charging, yes?
Yes, there's a motion to refer to both legislative matters.
Right. And community resources. Okay, discussion, Counselor Jared.
But does it need to also be referred to the planning board or is that assumed?
Uh, no, it does act, well, it's under, uh, it's under zoning ordinance, Laura, yes, I see it. Not, yes. So thank you. So we need to amend that to add, um, planning board.
Move to amend, add planning board?
Motion has been made.
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Counselor Foster. Um, any discussion on adding planning? Roll call on amending that motion, Laura?
Okay, um.
Like it was friendly, friendly like.
Okay, Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jared.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes. Okay, any discussion on referring it to those three places? So we'll do community resources first and then, uh, planning and legislative matters. Seeing none. Call please, Laura.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jared.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Maori.
Yes. Okay, that's been referred and I see no other business.
Move to adjourn, please.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Laura, roll call, adjourning.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jared.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all.